I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is five B, approval of the regular meeting minutes from July 10, 2023 council meeting. Anything on that?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Support. It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Abstain.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have the public comment period. I would ask that anyone who has anything to say, please step up to the podium, state your name and address, and you do have three minutes to make any public comments.
Once again, I'm here on behalf of myself because I was threatened by the council, by Daniel Byrd. I was lied to by Joe Di. I have not had any type of resolution or no feedback from nobody in this office about this. Daniel Byrd signed my name on something without my permission. Nobody up here said nothing to me about it yet. They have not even apologized. She has not even apologized for threatening me, but everybody wants to get upset with me because I don't stand up for the flag. Well, for your information, lady, this is why I don't stand up for the flag. I wear the damn uniform, so I don't have to stand up for it. That's your fault. You have made it personal by calling the police on me with that button. But that's your job. You don't like me dressing your boy down? I can understand that. I don't like being threatened. Evil only flourish when good people don't say anything. You heard somebody say my mother was good. Yes, she was. That's why I don't, that's why I can't believe this is going on. I've still been here since 1970. I've acted politely. I've acted, I've made an ass out of myself and everything else in here trying to get justice done for me, for identity theft. Daniel Byrd hadn't been signing a bill in my name and sending it to me. You guys won't even address that at all. You see, they say your three minutes are up. She's waiting to see it right now because you don't like being dressed down by me. You know what? I don't like dressing you down. To me, what I want to call you, Ryan, with witch. You guys, please, give me something on this one way or the other so I can stop coming in here. Because if I pay $62,000 for that house, I got another five for a lawyer. Then I would try my best to sue the city of Alleghen, and you would be number one in it for racism. You would be number one, Teresa Galloway, mayor, because you mad because I don't stand up for your flag. Say the pledge of allegiance to a flag that's not justice and liberty for everybody. Have you had the uniform on? No. And I bet he, his funny builder ass ain't never had it on. But you guys let them lie to me and threaten me, and you look at me like I don't know what the hell I'm talking about. I'm gonna get tired of it. I'm already tired of it. Let's have some type of resolution on this so I can stop coming in here, so you can stop seeing me, and I can stop looking at all you guys. When evil flourish, good people don't do shit.
Is there any more public comment?
I just have a quick question. Who do I call for the neighbors to mow their grass? My name is Mary Jo Berry. It's about up to here. That may be exaggerating, but it's over my hip. I used to do it before the land was sold. Once it got sold, I stopped. I mean, I used to, Mr. Byrd, yeah, I used to do the whole yard, the vacant lot, all along the side of the street because I felt people weren't taking care of it as fast as I want. So who do I call to report I want their grass cut? Or, is there any suggestions, recommendations? Who do I call?
So we do have an app that you can download that, what's our app called? See Click Fix, that you can use that to report it, or you could probably just call City Hall.
Call who?
Call City Hall and give them the address.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Is there any more public comment? Okay. At this time, next on the agenda is 10A, request from Wings of Hope. Joel, are you gonna take this?
Sure. I'll back over that document we had. So in your packet is a request from Teresa Lynn. She's the executive director for Wings of Hope. Every year, they request to hang butterflies on display for the early part of September. This is September 8 through September 12. They've been doing this now, I believe, for the past three years down on the riverfront. It brings the community down. Each butterfly represents someone in memory. So we've never had an issue with them being left out longer than that. We've never had an issue with those falling in the river. So what we don't have is a process for city staff to approve it, so we just ask them to submit a letter and we bring it to you. And so they're looking for a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is reports from boards, commissions, and city offices. 11A, city boards, commissions, and area agencies. 11A1 is the Downtown Development Authority July meeting. I'll take this. I got my notes here somewhere. Okay. We met and Parker talked about, he gave an update regarding the downtown improvement project. The update included weekly updates from the contractor. General discussion was had about that. Nothing really new on that. The wave-finding signage, Parker gave an update regarding the way sign, I'm sorry, the wave-finding signage project. We're moving ahead with that. We have our first, we had a call and we have our first meeting this, excuse me, Thursday morning. And there's representatives from the DDA, which is Nicole, Public Spaces is Judy McCall. Delora and I are on it. Of course, Joel and Parker are very active. I don't know who, what other rest of the staff is gonna be in that, involved in that. But we're moving forward with the company to try and get some signage for when we get ready for, with our streetscape plan. And the next thing we talked about was the downtown snow removal. The contractor that we had is not gonna do it anymore. So it went out for bid and there was no bids received, so we're talking about DPW taking care of that. And I, that's all in the works on how that's gonna be handled and what areas are gonna be done and all of that. And I think that was, oh, Heather asked about an update on the 101 Brady Street project, which Joel provided, same as he told us about. So that was all we talked about on that. Next on the agenda is the 11A2, the Public Spaces Commission July meeting. Bill, would you please report on that?
I will. We had our meeting and it was not a lot that went on, but we did talk about the Water Street Boardwalk, cleaning that up. I would set a date for September 22nd, if that works with city staff, to clean that up. Again, we wanted that to be community-wide besides just the city staff, so. And what else? I'm sorry, I left my notes in my truck, so bear with me. The city has been working with the Alleghen Parks Master Plan. They plan on giving it to us in the August meeting, but the August meeting going into that is going to be touring the Girl Scout properties. The plan, or the commission wanted to see that. Let's see, it gave an update of Oakwood Cemetery. There were some pillars that need to be replaced on the Arbor Street side. They talked about those. Did talk about some trees. There are four trees that were taken out on the river boardwalk, and those are gonna be replaced by, help me out, Joel, marmo, marmo maple trees, like we've been planting, so.
Correct.
Those will be placed there. Let's see, there's a dead tree. They said a 108 chestnut tree, Chestnut Street. Street furniture was gone over. Parker shared the color selections with everyone. Joel had talked about a tree donor program. And I believe they talked about $500 donation, but they wanted to do a plaque, one singular plaque with everybody's names on it instead of putting plaques down by the trees, instead of walking on them and it gets destroyed and everything else. So that was something that was talked about. They also talked about recycling for, for the new trash receptacles and everything else. Let's see. Eddie brought up that he would like to see more representation of the Native American history reflected in some of our city parks. And that's sounded very nice, it really did, and they showed, he showed a couple of slides of some things that other communities have done. Alleghen has a rich history in Native Americans, and I think we should bring it to the forefront. But anyways, that was brought up. That's about all I can remember. Joel, anything else?
Nope, you covered it all.
Thank you, Bill. Next on the agenda is 11A3, zoning board of appeals, July 13th meeting. Joel, please.
Sure, yeah. Property owner at 127 Robinson Street applied to the zoning board of appeals to get a reduced front yard setback for a porch addition. The port, right now, the front yard setback in that neighborhood's 25 feet from the right-of-way. They're at 19 feet, and this porch addition will knock them down to 12 feet. There is a handful of properties along that street that are already, you know, closer than 12 feet. And so the ZBA heard the application, reviewed it, and felt it was worthy to approve it, so they approved that variance.
That it, Joel?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Joel. Next on the agenda is 11B1, request to approve accounts payable and payroll. Roger, please.
Yes, we have accounts payable in the amount of $1,431,747.66, and a payroll in the amount of $147,901.65, for a total disbursement of $1,579... All right, let me try that again. $1,579,649.31. I make a motion to approve.
I'll support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is 11C, Public Works. 11C1, request to declare the emergency siren located at 300 Monroe Street as surplus and discuss emergency sirens, siren coverage in the city of Alleghen. Joel, you gonna kick this off?
Sure, yeah. So this is public safety, not Public Works. You threw me for a loop there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was like, what?
Thank you.
So no, yeah, public safety. What we have is a discussion that we need to have with council regarding our siren coverage in the city of Alleghen. I invited Fire Chief Nick Brink to be here this evening so he can answer any questions that might, you know, come from this. So the city owns four sirens, you know, in our city limits. They're more or less at the center of each of those four circles on the map that you see on the screen and the map that was provided in your packet. Fire Department is spending some significant money at the fire station off Monroe, 300 Monroe. They're doing, a new roof is being replaced on, just the back third or the back half? Yep, thank you for coming up to the podium. Sorry, I was asking questions.
That's okay. It's the back two-thirds. So there's three sections of the fire station. The first section was done about 10 years ago, and now we're catching up on the back two-thirds.
On the back two-thirds is where our, one of our sirens is located. It is a very old, I would use the words outdated, fire or emergency siren. They will not be putting that siren back up on that new roof. So they have submitted some options that they got from their contractor. One is to replace this, reinstall the old siren on a new, with new mounting parts and a pole at the tune of 8,800. Purchase and install in a location chosen, you know, by the city, a refurbished, modern siren and mounting part at 17,600, or purchase and install at a location chosen by the city, a new siren at 27,200. So the sirens are not required by the city. We're not required to have sirens, first of all. That's something we want to be clear with the council. I did not know that until Nick shared that with me. And so the other thing we did is we looked at the intersecting circles on the map you see and what part of the city would not be covered if we take out that center one. So what you have is in the northwest corner of the city, and it's really just two parcels that are just outside the reaches of that siren. One of those happens to be Chief Brink's house. It's just, it's a coinkadika, it works that way, when him and I were looking at this map. The other area that you see where, like, you see the Kalamazoo River and M40, that's, you know, township. That's not inside the city limits. So we're not in an urgent location, I would say, for us to look at this right now. But this is something I think council needs to have a discussion on, and is there other parts of the city that we think we want to test and make sure we're covered on? Nowadays, with the advent of cell phones, a lot of people get, like, National Weather Service alerts on their phone. I know you can turn that off. I'm not recommending at all that we get rid of our siren system. We're gonna keep it. It's just that one, where would be a better place for us to locate it? We might be able to locate it further to the east in the city limits, but pick up some more of the unincorporated, you know, township lands and provide it more of a community service. You know, there's an opportunity for us to look at it that way. So we just wanted to throw this on the table. Nick's here to answer any questions that might be answered. And the other part of this is, I would like to recommend to council that we declare that existing siren as surplus. Donate it to the fire district. The fire district can then turn and donate it to the contractor doing the work, and they will remove $800 from their bill. That can get, $800 can go a little way with the fire district. I mean, your equipment's expensive, but it can go a little way with some stuff and just ease some of the burden, you know, for the fire district. That would be my recommendation. The city has no desire to try to repurpose or sell this on our own. That is, you know, juice isn't worth our squeeze.
So the, that little section that's not covered, is it just a matter of decibels? Like, there's a lower, like, are you measuring that by decibels and how loud it is there, or you can't? We get outside that line and suddenly we can't hear it?
No, it's a, it's a drop dead. No, I'm just kidding. So, so how it works is they go by 4,500 feet is what the effectiveness is. So it's about five miles, so each one of those circles is a five-mile circle. It doesn't mean that you can't hear it. It just means that the effectiveness is not good, kind of like an expiration date on milk, right? It doesn't mean it goes bad. It just means that it's not guaranteed and it's not effective at that point, right? So that's what that means. It doesn't mean that I can't hear it at my house. It just means that it's not guaranteed to be heard at my house. A tree could affect it. The building could affect it. The weather could affect it. So that's, that's what they say, because they don't want to have an open-end contract where it says you'll always be able to hear everything, so there's a limit.
So you, as one of the head public safety officials, are you concerned about that little swatch?
I am not concerned about that little section, no.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear.
I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I turned it off. With, there's three left, then. There would be three left, correct? So what are they mounted to? Would it be possible just to move those, one of those, a little bit to capture that area?
So, so each one of the three other ones are mounted on a telephone pole, whether it be an existing pole for cable or whatever, or an independent pole that was put in just for that reason. They can be moved, but they're very costly as they have to be hooked to electric and that kind of thing. So wherever you move it to has to be somewhere near an electric, and then you'd have to pay an electrician to dismount it, remount it. And it gets kind of costly. That's one of the problems that we encountered when we were looking at, how do we try to do that? It's not impossible. It's just, it's kind of a costly thing. And I think one thing to note is that the five-mile radius is, is a, an estimate. I don't necessarily think that it is uber-important that we have 100% coverage when you look at it on a map because the siren is, is not, is affected by all the natural surroundings. You know, the buildings, the walls, we're in a hole. I mean, so, so when you look at the map, it might look good, it might look bad, but you have to take into account what the people are actually hearing and what you want them to hear. So yes, you could move them, but I'm not sure that it would improve where you're at now based on the positioning of them. I think they are positioned fairly adequately. Just keep in mind that we are in a hole, so if you want everybody to hear them, you need to kind of have something on the level of the hole.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, that section that's removed, that's not even, as far as I could look, that's not in the city. That's outside the city.
So that map...
Just looking at the map.
Yeah, just looking at the map. Like I mentioned, there are two parcels that are right at the edge. It's where Goodwin comes up and intersects with Lake Drive.
It's a super-nice neighborhood, right there.
It was, though, about three years ago.
True.
So, yeah, the 95% of that area is outside the city. You're correct on that. But there are two parcels, I want to be very clear. There are two parcels in the city that would be outside that, you know, limit.
Most of that area is all Alleghen Township.
Then, does anybody know what the township or the county has for coverage on their siren system? Is there a map anywhere of that?
So I don't have it with me, but Alleghen Township is not covered anywhere near what the city is. The population isn't as dense as the city, so it's spread around you. The township has one siren that they technically own, and that's out on the Dumont Complex. Everything else is owned by the city, and they, the township residents are benefited by the city sirens. It'd be kind of hard for them to place 20 of them, to try to get all the way around the circumference.
Okay, anything else for Nick?
So there is a motion that has to be made to de, to declare the siren as surplus and donate it to Alleghen Fire District. So we are asking council to make that. I guess we'll just go ahead and put this on the back burner if you would like to relocate a new one or not. You see the prices there. We can bring it up later if council wants to bring it up at a later time. But that was the purpose of this agenda item.
So can we get a motion, please?
I move what he said.
I'll support what he said.
You can also say, you know, adopt staff's recommendation as presented in the report is another way to say it as well.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
The fire district thanks you.
Thank you, Nick.
Have a good day.
Next on the agenda is, this time we'll do Public Works. 11E1, request to authorize a transfer of year, fiscal year 2019 airport funds to the Coleman A. Young Airport in Detroit, Michigan. Doug?
Yes, we were notified by MDOT a short while ago that we had some 2019 fiscal year funds, $104,000. We were not able to use, basically because we had the provisionary license, we couldn't do any work on the ACIP. So what MDOT recommends is we transfer the money to another airport in Michigan rather than send it back to the federal government. I believe that we benefited from this when we constructed our airport.
Any questions for Doug?
When you say, we benefited, that, we, we were the recipients of someone else's excess funds?
That's my understanding, is we received from Frankfurt?
Yeah, so back in 2019, Frankfurt did not spend all of their, MDOT, you know, appointed, you know, or allocated funding. And so they were able, were able to send their money to us for our terminal, which helped us get our terminal done a year earlier than what we were planning on it. And so they were able, were able to send their money to us for our terminal, which helped us get our terminal done a year earlier than what we were planning on it.
So we're kind of paying it forward.
That is one way to look at it. The, the other thing that Doug mentioned to me, that M dot shared with him, was if we send this money back to the federal government, the federal government deducts it from the next year's allocation to the state. This is truly, if you don't use it, not only do you lose it, but you lose it going forward. And so, it was out of our hands, the provisional license, I mean, the tree clearing issue, the, you know, obstructions I was with that. So this is something that, you know, it's very common with M dot and their Arrow Department on, you know, moving funding around to keep projects going with the airport industry.
Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the staff's report and to transfer, authorize the transfer of the funds.
I'll support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is eleven E two, request to authorize a purchase order for the Riverworks Construction for repairs to the riverfront boardwalk in the amount of eighty-seven thousand six hundred and ten dollars, and reject the low bid of TJM Services for bid inaccuracies. Doug?
Yes, we did receive three bids. They were opened by the city clerk back in June. Uh, one company was the apparent low bidder. We sent the information on to Avon Marsh Engineering. They looked at it, they scrutinized it, and Avon Marsh did send us a recommendation that we reject that low bid of TJM. They list a couple sentences in their memo, and that we awarded to, uh, Riverworks out of Holland. And we do have funds available in the current fiscal year for the project, so there should be no, uh, fund transfer.
Any questions?
What's the scope of this work?
Scope this work is to replace any bad joists underneath the boards that you walk on, as well as reinforce the horizontal joist and put cross timbers between the vertical poles that you see down there, between, I think it's, uh, section six up to the, uh, boardwalk, uh, head wall.
Is it just the suspended bridge part and the supports underneath, not the whole boardwalk?
Not the whole boardwalk. It's just on the Veterans Park back to Mayhand Park. Uh, Hanson Park, by the library, sorry.
Sure. Okay.
Will this work happen next spring? When's the?
Well, anticipating it happening yet this fall, with the contractor can start. They can start in, after the weekend, uh, events are up, and get it done, I believe it's November, maybe December timeline.
Can we get a motion, please?
I make a motion to authorize the purchase order.
Give me two a second.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Next on the agenda is eleven F, city manager and city clerk. Eleven F one, request to accept the June twenty twenty-three downtown infrastructure and streetscape project.
Uh, the base course is going to be going down, uh, hopefully by the end of this month. Uh, conduits being installed along Brady and Hubbard, or Hubbard Brady right now. They're doing the light pole foundations. Uh, riverfront sewer, they just kind of wrapped that up. I believe they made a connection at the top of the hill, uh, late last week, uh, filling in some big holes. It's like that sewer's like thirty-some feet deep. It was a massive hole down there. And then they're going to start working on Lucas Street this month, hopefully. And then, well, we, we've worked, um, since we're moving through the meeting pretty quickly, I'm getting a lot of nice compliments from the store owners about how professional Melbacher is. I mean, they're going out of their way to tell me how pleasant they are, and, you know, our own city staff as well, but, it's just, you know, that's always a good one. Um, with that said, I did get several emails or several pictures today from one building owner who has some concerns about crumbling foundation where the sidewalk came out that we're going to have to address, but, a lot of, a lot of compliments, and then, like I said, I got that one email today, you know. I mean, with all construction projects, it's, you know, you're going to run into some issues, but so far, you know, things are going really smooth with this project.
Joel, was there an issue over here? I, the corner of Chestnut and Hubbard? Like, all that big pile of dirt?
That's where we were, that's where we were connecting the sewer from the riverfront, the new sewer line coming up, and that's where it was thirty-four feet deep. That's what that big issue was. And as they were doing it, the water main was in close proximity. So they're putting in sheet piling, trying not to hit a water main while at the same time building a manhole. They're, they're working in tight corners, and so, I, I, I spent maybe five minutes watching them as I was waiting for Doug to come meet me to talk about a power pole. And I was just like, wow. The way they were using the cranes and the front-end loaders and with precision, but at the same time with big clunky pieces of iron, it's impressive.
The only issue I heard was something about the county's fiber line and us almost cutting it, but they weren't very happy about.
So, like, like with all projects, you're going to run into a ink.
That was the only one I've heard of any problems.
Yeah.
And it was taken care of and it didn't happen.
Yeah, yeah, with that one, the, the big part was we did not have knowledge or records that the county has utilities in our right of way. We all knew county had fiber, but there was no documentation of where that was, and we ran into an issue with that. But that's been resolved. Uh, Steve Sador, who's the county facility manager, has what I would call him, he's our contact. They're, uh, at the same time we're doing this, they're trying to connect on point to their fiber system. And so you just got a lot of cooks in the kitchen making two different recipes that are bumping elbows in that way, but.
And they have issues over by where the circle's going as well, so.
They worked with M dot too on M dots, yeah, so it's not just the downtown side.
I only, I only bring it up because it, it's something that, when you look at our internet bills, I would like to talk with the county to see if we could have some cooperation on maybe getting onto their fiber, because right now we're spending like twenty-three grand a year on charter.
So, that, that's a conversation, you know, Peter, you reached out to me a couple times on this one. That's a conversation we're willing to have, um, with them at a minimum, since we planned this with extra conduit for our, for, you know, any and anything to go in these conduits. I want to at least connect our downtown properties, so we have one bill for the city hall, the regent, the Griswold, and the riverfront restrooms, all on one, and that's going to be very doable. Hanging fiber and connecting to the police department, or the water treatment plant, or the wastewater resource, resource recovery facility, DPW, is a little more complicated. In the early two thousands, mid-two thousands, um, the city did contract with the county for all IT services, and every city employee I talked to that was here prays us not to do that. They go, they shut you down, they take over, and I'm seeing other county, I, I, it's a conversation we need to have. But getting the city's internet bill more manageable, just so we don't have five accounts when we have four buildings within, you know, a hundred and fifty feet of each other is, there has to be a solution in my brain, or not in my brain, but there has to be a solution, my brain thinks.
There, there is, I think, and I think if we work with the county and with their IT, who does the architect and the public schools, because they're all on that same fiber, and there's a lot of fiber that's currently dark, meaning it's, it's not in use.
Not used, they, they, they have, they have strands available.
They have strands available, and it goes right past. But it's, I don't want them to be IT, it's just pay for use of your fiber.
And that's what, that, that's the pushback I get from my, from staff here. I mean, like, not yelling pushback, but very stern, listen here, Joel. This is the way it needs to work. And I'm like, well, let's talk about it. They're like, no. So it, it's them coming in, doing the management part. They had fiber running into the old city hall. You know, we still had that.
Comes out right over here, actually.
Yeah, yeah, this one, it's right across the street for us to connect right here on Chestnut. So that's something we will, you know, look into as we start going down this process more. Any questions about the downtown project in addition to what I just said?
So, just for clarification, you said that they're, they're going to have the base course in by the end of the month? That, that's a week from today, or do you?
So probably, probably, probably not the end of this month, then. You're right. We're that far ahead in July.
Yeah.
Summer's flying by. People think it's like July fifth.
Yeah.
It's gone fast.
So, it's going to be a few weeks, yeah?
It's going to be a few weeks. Yeah. Gary, do not say the end of this month, please. There you go. That's perfect. The asphalt plants close November fifteenth, so by November fifteenth at least.
Okay, if there's no more questions, could we, uh, accept, please, get a motion?
You really don't need a motion?
You just wanted us to make sure we were good?
The minutes would just say, council, you know, receive the present update.
We're good. Next on the agenda is eleven F two, request to approve the proposed land division of parcel number zero three five one two hundred zero zero four zero zero located at nine twenty-five River Street.
So, nine twenty-five River Street, uh, in your packet, you received a report from Jason Derry, our zoning administrator with PCI. Um, this is owned by the Tooker family, or Ms. Tooker, uh, an elderly lady who lives up there. She is splitting off the western half of her parcel, as shown on the map, so. Parcel A, which is that large parcel, will be a thirteen point seven eight acre piece, and then parcel B, which has the house and its frontage along River Street, will be four point one three acres. Um, since there are a couple planning commissioners on here, and we've talked to a handful of developers about this, I did talk to Ms. Tooker, and this property is being sold to a family friend who promised to keep it in its current state, so he could take his grandchildren fishing in the pond. We had developers that are looking to develop it for housing. Private property can do as you want, but, uh, our master plan still has this planned for, uh, mixed-density housing, so who knows what the future really holds down the road? But this is a land split that's being done, uh, really to, at Ms. Tooker's wish. So, all land splits have to be approved by the city council. Staff is recommending that you approve this land split.
I'll make a motion to approve the land split.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is eleven F three, request to approve the proposal plant amendment of parcel number zero three five one one hundred zero six one zero zero and dash one nine zero zero two seven zero zero.
Thank you very much. Uh, these two parcels are located on the west side of Sherman Street. They are two separate parcels. The, what I'm going to call the westernmost parcel does not have legal frontage on a road. Uh, for one reason or another, the property owner is looking to combine these two parcels into one parcel. Um, this is a permitted action. However, city council has to approve all plat amendments, and so we're amending this. So it's one parcel instead of two parcels.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve this plat amendment.
Second.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is eleven F four, request to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Lakeshore Advantage contract. Joel?
Sure, thank you, mayor. Uh, last week you received a presentation by Lakeshore Advantage, that updated you on the work that they've been doing along in West Michigan, specifically here in the city of Alleghan. Um, I added to that conversation about the benefit I've seen by having them as being our economic development organization. Uh, we annually contract with them. Um, this is the base amount that, uh, we contract that, or that they offer, and it's what I'm comfortable staying at for this upcoming year at six thousand two hundred and fifty. Um, this was, um, this will come out of the city manager's, uh, contract line item in our upcoming budget. Any questions about the presentation last week or the report?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-four Lakeshore Advantage contract.
Second.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next was our, um, added item, request to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign a three-year lease agreement with Otter's Chiropractic Clinic, PLLC. Joel?
Sure, uh, so Rocky Saunders is the chiropractor that rents a unit two here at city hall. That's a one thousand five hundred and twenty-five square foot office space. Um, he's been there for the past three years. Uh, we started negotiating his lease or renewal last month. He does have a long-term plan to purchase a building in the downtown Alleghan and, you know, go that route. So he was looking at some opportunities, and they just didn't come to fruition, and so he said he wants to stay here. He really appreciates being a tenant here at city hall. Um, when you, if you recall, the first lease, uh, happened during COVID, and so we had what I would call a staggered or escalated rent agreement, where like the first year was eight hundred, and it jumped to twelve hundred, then it jumped up to seventeen hundred, but it was a total, it was an average of one thousand two hundred and seventy over three years, which is what we originally talked to him about back then. Um, this new, uh, rate is one thousand four hundred dollars a month, starting in August.
And staying at the same rate, Joel?
Yeah, 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 so it's a fourteen hundred dollar a month for three years, no escalators.
So he has hopes to purchase a building. He still wants a three-year lease?
Yeah. If, in the, in the contract, in the lease agreement, it does have a six-month termination clause. So if we like to terminate, or if we like to terminate, we have to give each other a six-month notice. So we can't just go in there one day and say, hey, we found someone who wants to pay eighteen hundred, please leave. We have to give him six months' notice, and he has to give us a six-month's notice. And the reason that's in that clause, or that agreement, uh, some commercial leases don't have that. They have, if you want to leave, you pay the full amount. If someone's looking to leave and continue to invest in the city, or if they've been a good tenant for us so far, I'd like to keep that kind of a relationship. And I would recommend to council you keep that kind of a relationship.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the three-year lease agreement.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is item number twelve, board appointments. Twelve A, appointment of Sarah Raymaker to the Historic District Commission with a term set to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Joel?
Yeah, I'm going to cover these next two items, even though they're two separate motions.
Great.
Uh, we have two vacancies on the HDC right now. Uh, we had three applications. Of the two, of the three, only two live in the historic district right now. So my recommendation to the mayor, when we talked about this, is that we appoint the two that live in the city or in the historic district to this board. The third, uh, applicant was Jason Raymaker's aunt. So, I know there was some conversation with council, whether or not it's appropriate to have a husband and wife on the HDC. I would offer, we have two vacancies, we had, we're three vacancies. We've had two applications of the two. One was a wife, one was an aunt. I'm personally recommending that we go with the two that live in the, the district right now. This does take two separate motions, one for each person.
Yep. So could we get a motion for Sarah, please?
I just wanted to make sure there's no conflict of interest according to our bylaws or rules. That seemed to be a topic last time.
I read through the bylaws for the HDC, and I didn't see anything. It, the conflict of interest portion was more so addressing any personal matters that you might have financial gain in or personal gain in. But as far as an interrelationship type thing between two board members, I didn't see anything that spoke to that.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I'll make a motion to appoint Sarah Raymaker to the HDC.
Second.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And next on the agenda is to appoint Marjorie Cantow, Cantwell, to the Historic District Commission.
I'll make a motion to appoint Marjorie Cantwell.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is communications from city manager, council, and mayor. We'll start with Doug. Do you have anything else? Thank you. Michaela?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, Joel?
Yeah, just whenever I have the need interaction with someone, I like to share with council. Today, talking about our airport, got a phone call from a gentleman who did not say where he was flying in from, but he was flying in. His wife was driving in. They're gonna get a VRBO. He wanted to know what the rate was to do a tie-down at the airport, and it's twenty dollars a month on their fee schedule, but I don't know if we have a box out there for people to put the twenty dollars in. So it's not there for us to look into, Doug. Then he started, he just started asking about our town because they'd never been here. They just looked it up online and they go, seems like the kind of town we want to visit. So he's going for a joyride in his airplane. His wife's gonna do a joyride in the car. And they're gonna stay at a VRBO somewhere nearby, and the unfortunate part is they're coming Sunday through Wednesday, so. They'll get food trucks. I told him about the food truck rally. I'm like, but if you come on the weekends, yeah, live music on Fridays and Saturdays. And a handful of the restaurants are open on Monday night, so it's always neat to get those kind of phone calls with people who are coming here to visit, you know? It's a neat little thing. The other thing I would say is in regards to our events that are happening on the riverfront. So far, very positive for Friday nights, the ones the city puts on, and Saturday is what Leah Ward does with Good Times at the Gazeebo. We've had two events now where a third party has put on an event Saturday night on the Riverfront stage, and then Good Times at the Gazeebo still happens. And I asked the band the first night, and they said, you know, they didn't have any issue except, you know, they had to remind themselves to keep their rhythm a couple of times and not switch to the, it was a Latin festival. They go, if you hear us doing a Latin beat, please, you know, let us know. And then I talked to Leah last week and she goes, not one concern. And I thought, I, I really thought you guys made a mistake allowing, you know, Riverfront and gazebo at the same time, but obviously it's, it's been a great hit. So I think once the construction's all done, which is another cool thing, that all these people are still coming down during all this mess. Blows my mind, but it's a really, it's a testament to this community and the city, so. Things are going really positive that from what we can see.
Thank you, Joel. Bill, do you have anything to discuss?
I do, but I'm not gonna say anything this meeting. Has to do with blight, and I keep harping at that constantly. I don't think Jay's policy is working. I drive around every single day of the week. I've been doing it for years. I don't see any improvement whatsoever. There's probably a half a dozen properties in this town that stay a mess and are continually to stay a mess.
Any?
That's all I gotta say.
Any suggestions?
I don't know what to do.
What different, I know, I know.
Jay's wants to be Mr. Nice Guy, and I understand that. We all want to be Mr. Nice Guy. But we've got to start drawing the line and staying someplace. And we need to get a little tougher, I believe. And I see another one cropping up here just on my trip around town yesterday, so. My kids call it my blight tour. But that's beside the point.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you, Bill. Dave, do you have anything?
Nothing at this time, thanks.
Thank you. Delora?
Do I just have a follow-up to Paul Wiley, who was at our last meeting and talked about the gypsy moths? I had a, yeah, so I had a separate conversation with him, and he has offered to do a walk-in talk for council up at Oakwood Cemetery if we would like to see, you know, the state of some of the trees there. I will say that I was in Kalamazoo on a river nature walk on Saturday and kind of talked to him. I'm like, I saw these bugs on the trees, and he's like, yeah, that's the gypsy moths and the moths. So I got quite a good lesson about it. But he did mention that historically the county has had a spray program and that Sandy Pines does a spray program, also the city of Kentwood. The best time to spray, he said, would be in the spring, but if we wanted to get on the bandwagon and, and look into this, that now is the time to start doing that. So I'm concerned about it, definitely. I don't know how full council feels, but if so, then we could direct staff to start looking into this. Since it falls within the cemetery, a lot of it, and trees, maybe this is something public spaces could bring up and determine whether they want to bring a recommendation forward for spraying. But he said that he could help us even figure out how to do a program for it. And if we could get the township on board, we could probably get some of the, the spray at a bulk rate. And he said, in his experience, people would pay maybe five to twenty dollars for the spraying, like personally, but you have to get permission from each property owner in order to do it. So there is some legwork to do. As he mentioned here, he did not want to have a job, but he would be happy to volunteer and to help coordinate that, so.
Doug, is this something you've ever dealt with in your years of?
Gypsy moth?
Yeah. Okay, so you're familiar with?
That was on my list also, which I left in my trunk.
A number of years ago when I was at City of East Grand Rapids Engineering Department, we dealt with that. Like Ms. Andrews said, it was done on a countywide basis. We went out in the winter months, I think, did the survey, looked for the eggs, and they got on the list, and the county did a countywide spraying, targeting those hardwood areas.
Okay, good.
He had said he didn't believe that the county still had a program, but they may, and I don't know.
Is this something you could reach out to Scott and see if Scott's willing to carry the torch at the county? I mean, gypsy moths cross jurisdiction boundaries.
Yeah, and that's the thing. He said, even at Seago Township, he wondered because over by the Moose Lodge, there's a whole bunch of trees that are being decimated and that you can put up burlap. I mean, like I said, I got a really good lesson about it. It was very, very interesting. But yeah, I think we could probably ask Scott to check with the county as well. But again, if that's something council wants to do, then we should probably get the wheels going. I just don't want to see all of our, our beautiful oaks.
I know.
Get east, and then they'll move on to something else once those are gone.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Is that, are you ahead?
Yes.
Okay. Mike, do you have anything?
Mr. Jones is upset about his water bill. Can you tell me how much that bill is?
Yeah, it's less than a hundred right now.
Sixty-two something? Does that ring a bell?
I thought it was seventy-two.
Seventy-two?
But I think that was last month, so if we add another thirty, it's a hundred and two.
There is a letter that went out to Mr. Jones in the email today. Did you get that, that Michaela shared with us?
So, so we, we have, we have talked to Mr. Jones via phone. We have talked to Mr. Jones through a letter. We've sent out to him, so he's had two phone conversations with us and written communication. He has reached out to Representative Smith's office. Representative Smith's office has reached out to us to understand our policy, our ordinances, our fee schedule. So he's had those contacts as well. And this afternoon, Michaela interacted with a person who claimed to be the attorney for Mr. Jones. And Michaela shared with him, you know, what our ordinance is, what our policy is, gave him, you know, gave him copies, right? Yeah, gave him copies. This, this is one of the just frustrating unfortunate ones. I mean, we've explained what the rules are with this, and it's just not being received.
And is his property have water flowing at this point?
Well, the, the, the water is shut off, but his complaint is that we should not serve, charge him a ready, a ready-to-serv fee, which our policy, our ordinance is, if you own a property and water and sewer is stubbed to it, it's ready to serve, that parcel pays a ready-to-serve fee.
Did you say that was a change we made in two thousand twenty-one?
It's really a change, but it was an updated when we had a WISK. Yep.
Wait, so is it a change or is it always?
No, we just adopted that whole set of ordinances.
You adopted that whole set of ordinances. Thank you very much, Michaela.
But my understanding is we'd always had the ready-to-serve fees.
You've had the ready-to-serve fees for the his-
Yeah, for as long as.
As long as we know.
Don't you see it on your water bill? It's like seventeen dollars or something like that.
I see ready-to-serve. I'm trying to understand the policy of continuing ready-to-serve when the water shut off.
So a lot of your-
And when you connect it and turn it back on, it's ready to go. So it's not a complete disconnection.
When they go to, correct, when they go to Florida in the wintertime, we'll call City Hall and say, we need our water turned off. They'll turn it off, but they still play or pay a ready-to-serve all winter long while they're gone. Then when they get back, they have to call and have it turned back on for usage.
And that's been true since before two thousand twenty-one, or that was a?
Yeah, they've always been charged a ready-to-serve fee. Yeah.
So going off the letter we sent is by resolution at the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting, council updated the policy. The policy clarifies when and how our RTS fees are to be applied. Section one dash ten CA of the policy applies to the situation that states RTS shall be charged to any property connected to the water and/or sewer utility. Connected means that there is a customer plumbing extending beyond the water curb stop to beyond the, the water curb stop and/or sewer Y stub onto the property for use. A no-use or temporary turn-off water slash sewer service does not remove the responsibility of paying the RTS fees. So that was clarified with different language, probably in twenty twenty-one is what that letter says.
That all came about when we did WISK, WISK, WISK.
WISK, yep.
Yep, and the ready-to-serve for a separate meter for outdoor was hooked up to someone and they didn't realize there, they didn't think they should pay ready-to-serve on both meters and all that. So we did, we redid all of that. The wording we kept, but there was something I think we changed so it was more clear, like when it was shut off, when it was actually a disconnect, you know?
Because there are people that felt that if they just turn the water off, that they should get zero water bill because I don't have any water coming to my property. That's a commodity charge. Water going to your property through your faucets, you're paying for a commodity. And that's that five dollars and four cents or whatever it is, give or take, you know, per, you know, one thousand gallons. The, the ready-to-serve is the flat fee that everybody pays, you know, as council member Morgan said. It's on everybody's bill. You see it on, you see it on yours, that everybody pays if they own a parcel and that pipe is connected to that property. It's ready to serve.
So are we treating ready-to-serve as a tax then?
No, it's, it's a flat fee.
But you can't opt out of it.
Yes, you can opt out by completely removing the stub from the main. So the main, there, there is no pipe from the water main that goes to your property. So if you ever want to build a house there, you're gonna have to pay the water connection fee to connect to our system. A lot of professionals in the water utility industry will tell, will advise us, you do not want to find easy ways for people to get away from the ready-to-serve fee. You have a public drinking water system that requires millions of dollars to run. You have to pay that ready-to, that ready-to-serve fee is one, is one part of the revenue stream. So you can keep your public water system safe, healthy, operable for the public.
But there are rules about when you can charge and how you can charge. There's that whole Bolt versus Lansing stuff.
So what we can do is, once again, we can bring in Doug Squares and have this discussion during a study session. Bolt versus Lansing, which is a court case, was telling a municipality or a public drinking water system, you just can't collect money for the sake of collecting money and never reinvesting it back into your system. And that's what that municipality was accused of doing wrong. And Doug, I'm gonna look at you because you've run some water systems. That's essentially what Bolt is, right? Bolt is you can't collect money for the sake of collecting money and never reinvest it. You have to have a plan for it to go back into the system. To improve, back in the system, I mean, back into the plants, back into the pipes, back into the valves. You have to have a valve turning program, et cetera, et cetera. So, but if you guys would like to talk more about the fees as they're associated to, then council is gonna have to give that direction to us. We feel as staff, we have delivered the correct information multiple times to these, these property owners.
I mean, for me personally, I, I am happy with the ordinance we adopted in twenty twenty-one, and that's, I, I don't need to have another presentation on it, but.
I agree.
I think the main difference, Dave, is that when you have that coming on your property, we still gotta maintain that as a city. That's why we did that differentiation was you still have a Y stub coming on, and technically you could still be dumping down the sewers because there's no shut off for a sewer connection. So if you have a vacant property and your sewer's there, you could still be flushing stuff down. And we weren't charging you anything for it if we don't even have an RTS. So it's one of those, if you have the pipes on your property, and it affects me, my next-door house that I own, I pay RTS on, and I don't have water turned on. Yeah, that sucks for me, but I understand what the idea of it is, and then those funds were restricted, right? We have restricted water and sewer funds because we're taking that money and reinvesting it in the water and sewer, not just doing it because we want the city to make thirty bucks and, you know, it's, it's, it's gotta maintain all those pipes because now with the change of the lead line replacement, where now we're responsible from all the way from the central main to the house, eighteen inches into the house, where it used to only be to the curb stop. So even if they shut off at the curb stop, we still gotta maintain that and also onto the property because they have RTS, so. It's, I, I, I would love to not have to charge anything or if we want to look at an adjusted rate for it, but currently that is how it works, and it's just how we've adopted it and everybody's been paying RTS for, for that. I think one other change was if they went past a property, I think was one of them, but that's not the situation. Something about the water main within so many feet of it that they had to connect.
If you had a separate sprinkler system.
We also wanted.
Pay RTS.
And the main other one was we wanted, and that ordinance change was to adopt language that the township could use, because our language was, I think it was, it didn't call out the us, or it didn't call out the township. So then if they put it into their, if they adopted it, it wasn't really enforceable for the township customers. So.
Did that help, Mike? Peter, do you have anything?
No, I'm just grabbing Doug and, and Joel afterwards. It was just a little maintenance thing down at the river park.
Roger?
Uh, just two quick things. When I said I was also concerned, I was on the other side. Spray can, always concerns me because it kills everything. It kills our pollinators. It kills all the good stuff as well as the bad stuff. So I think we just need to be real careful if we just decide that we want to spray because bees and butterflies and dragonflies are all having a hard time, and I don't want to contribute to that. So that's just my two cents if we're gonna have that conversation. And another one is an anecdote, just anecdotally. Not this past Friday, but the Friday before at Roland on the River, I was going into our public restrooms on the riverfront, and there was an older couple coming in, and the wife you could see was kind of reticent to go in, and I, I heard the husband say, honey, this is Alleghen. It's gonna be clean. And I told, I shared this with Parker and, and Ryan, and I just thought, what a great thing that people are starting to go, well, it's gonna, of course, it's gonna be well-maintained because it's in Alleghen. So I just, that was not, when we moved here fifteen years ago, that would not have been the comment that I heard, and so just a kudos to city staff and everything that we're doing.
You're right, and I do, I've been living here all my life. That is a reputation that has changed over the years. It would just be nice to get some of the old people, older than me, on board with thinking how awesome it is, you know? But that's cool, Roger, to share. Yeah, Mike?
That comment just reminded me. That comment just reminded me, there was a post on one of the informs that the restrooms down at the JC Park.
Yeah, JC Park, the stalls were damaged this year pretty bad, and I think we're waiting for parts, or-
Waiting on parts.
Like, and unfortunately, that's the restroom that gets shut down during the winter months because it's on well water, and it's not climate controlled on the inside. So, unfortunately, we're just waiting on those doors to come in and hinges, I think it was springs or whatever it was.
Have they not been fixed this year yet?
I thought they, the damage happened a couple months ago, I believe. Yeah, it was early, it was early summer, late spring. So, they were, they were operational when they first got opened. That, that is a unfortunate building where destruction happens. You know, we've had some issues at the Riverfront Restrooms, you know, ripping down signs, teenagers loitering. We've had some conversations. Two weeks ago, somebody somehow had a key, and every single roll of toilet paper was stolen from the bathrooms. And then we went back through the cameras, and we could not track that. Thankfully, we have not had that issue again, but we, that was a, just, just a, I don't wanna say unfortunate, it's just, it's just a weird thing to deal with as a city manager. Yeah, being told, hey, every roll is gone. And I'm like, oh, they must have kicked these things off the wall. Nope. They're just like hanging. So, someone must have had a universal key and knew how to pick a lock, and wanted toilet paper really bad. We had a couple people washing clothes out of the Riverfront Restrooms this week, and then laying them on the Riverfront stage to dry. And so, you know, we, you know. But, yeah, the JC Park one, it's the doors.
But they're in the works, right? Okay. Along the blight lines, like Bill had said, the industrial park, does the city own any of those lots anymore? At one time, I thought we were all done with the lots at, in the, up in the industrial park.
Correct. The only lots the city owns are the side lot next to the DPW. That's part of our operations. And then we control the drainage pond, you know, the retention ponds, those are under our control. But the city owns no other property in that area. They've all been transferred to private property.
Okay. Are they held to the same standards of mowing their yards and Kappa? 'Cause some of them properties up through there look pretty bad.
That's something I'll look into. I believe our lawn grass applies to all properties. I don't believe it just applies to residential, but I'll have to look into that. I don't know off the top of my head then. I've already closed my computer, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. That's fine. I just wanted to bring it up as long as Bill brought up blight stuff. The other thing I wanted to remind council and make sure that you all received them, I did send out the emails for Joel's evaluation. We're gonna plan a special meeting for August 24th. What time works for everyone? It seemed like that was the night that everyone was available. Is like 5:30 too early? Do every, does everybody wanna get here and get it over with? Then we can, okay. So, if 5:30 works, we're gonna put that on the agenda, 'cause we'd need to vote on that, right? Or have it on the agenda or not to schedule a special meeting?
No, the mayor can call a special meeting. I will send an email tomorrow requesting that a closed session be done for an employee evaluation per the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you.
That's required. So, I'll send the email requesting that, and then as the mayor, you can call it. You can just respond to Michaela and say, okay, and then she'll post it.
Okay. In that email, Joel is going to evaluate himself and get that to me around August 7th or thereabouts. Michaela has sent out to the department heads, and she's gonna put together, the same people she did last year, I don't know if it was just the department heads. She's gonna put together a spreadsheet. As soon as I get those two, I will combine them and send them to you as well. I just wanted you to have Joel's evaluation, so we could give it some hard thought and have time to get it back. And we will sit down and try and go over them individually, and I would like to hear a little more individualized this year with everyone's comments, instead of just vaguely, this is what we got, okay? So, as well be expected another email from me on those. I think that's all I got.
Teresa, you want our finished ones put in your mailbox?
Nope, you can just keep them, and then you'll just go over them.
So, you don't want me to get it to Michaela, so she's gonna total it up or anything?
No.
I thought you wanted them in by August 1st.
No.
Guess I can't read.
Yours, you just keep, Bill, and then you just keep it until August 24th, and then we'll turn them into Joel. Or into staff, okay? Maybe I misworded it, Bill, but that's what I meant, okay? Okay. With that being said, I'm gonna run while Bill's reading that. It is 8:13, and I would like to adjourn the meeting, please. Just keep-